Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting of the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District Board of Trustees to order for August 18, 2022. Ask the Secretary of Police, Colerole.
Ms. Chambers.
Here.
Mayor Alai.
Here.
President Brown.
Here.
Mr. Sulu.
Here.
Mayor DeGee, the President.
Mayor Bachi.
President.
Ms. Dumas.
Here.
Thank you very much. And now ask for the approval of the minutes from our August 4, 2022, meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Bachi.
Second.
Second by Ms. Chambers. Is there a question? If there's no questions, the minutes will stand approved as they are printed. Now ask Madam CEO if anyone has signed up to speak during the public session portion of our agenda on a specific agenda topic.
They have not, Mr. President.
And then we will have your report, please.
Thank you, President Brown, and members of the board. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Beginning with COVID-19, we have no active cases among district employees with three district employees with COVID-like symptoms, so we remain at 225 confirmed cases since the beginning of the pandemic, with all of those folks recovered and returned to work. As you know, President Biden signed the Inflation Reduction Act of 2022 this week. While not focused on water, this bill includes initiatives with the potential investment in communities in clean water to address issues like climate change, environmental justice, and clean energy. So just a couple of the funding highlights that are in this new legislation. There's $1.9 billion for the Department of Transportation to support efforts to improve affordable transportation, and this does include stormwater management in disadvantaged communities. There's also $3 billion to EPA's Environmental and Climate Justice Block grants to help disadvantaged communities with activities related to climate resiliency and adaptation. And there's $837 million for HUD to support water and energy efficiency improvements in affordable housing. So we will continue to track this as it rolls out, but as we have discussed earlier and will see later on the agenda, our focus continues to be the money for clean water that's in the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. So the Ohio Water Environment Association held their annual technical conference July 25 through the 28 in Cleveland, and the district received several awards. So our sewer system maintenance and operation department received two Collection System Safety Awards, and these include the Collection Safety Award for organizations with more than 20 employees working in the collection system and the Collection System of the Year Award from OWEA. And then Environmental Services also received a safety certificate in recognition of their good work, and specifically, the criteria for these safety awards includes providing proper training, OSHA reportable accidents and injuries, conducting safety meetings, doing accident prevention and investigations, emergency action plans, lockout-tagout, and confined space training. So great work to the teams for those awards. And then also, each year, the OWEA awards the 5S Award to individuals across the state. Now, I'll say this very slowly. 5S is the Select Society of Sanitary Sludge Shovellers. The award is given to honor individuals who have made notable contributions to the wastewater industry, and it dates back to the mid-1980s, and there's over 200 folks who have been recognized with this award. And now this includes our own Frank Greenland as the fifth district individual to receive the 5S Award. So thank you. Congratulations to Frank.
He's been shoveling for a long time.
That's my life.
So that's wonderful recognition for Frank and for the team, and it was great to have this conference in Cleveland. So we have also been awarded with the 27th Annual Achievement of Excellence in Procurement for 2022 from the National Procurement Institute. As you know, this award is earned by public and nonprofit agencies that demonstrate a commitment to procurement excellence. We're one of five state agencies that have received this award, and we have received this award every year since 2015, except for the very weird year of 2017, when somehow Jackie Williams did not receive this award.
We're naming names.
She's giving anybody.
But this is a wonderful recognition of the very hard work that Jackie leads and also with Ken's support in the finance team, and I want to acknowledge that great work and the consistency of the work. Yeah, thank you, Jackie. I'm also excited to share that the district earned recognition for its graphic design on three projects from Graphic Design USA, which is an international resource for graphic design professionals. Our awarded projects included our 2022 Employee Calendar Celebration for our 50th Anniversary Year, one of our six 50th Anniversary Seals, which were also among the winners, and then our 2021 Employee Newsletter announcing the refreshed logo and the rebranding. So congratulations to the great work on this as well. And then we'll close with some great employee and facility photos as we recap our 2022 plant tours. So this was a new initiative to get folks that work in the district out and about in the district. And in May, June, and July, 56 employees toured easterly. The Sayoto Green Infrastructure Basin in East Cleveland, this is actually the Fleet Avenue Green Infrastructure Basin in Slavic Village, and then the Watershed Stewardship Center at West Creek in Parma. So folks gave great feedback. They really appreciated the opportunity to see our stormwater management work and our wastewater treatment work, and how important it is to meet their fellow employees and to see parts of the operation that they had not seen before. And I think, Ms. Chambers, you were on one of the tours as well.
Absolutely, yes.
So thank you. Thank you for joining us. So President Brown, that's our report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam CEO. Any questions? If not, we will move to our action items. Congratulations on all the awards and the fine work and recognition from the state. Let's start with authorization to advertise. Authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Section 6119.10 for the Chippewa Creek Bank stabilization at Route 21 in Brexfield Project anticipated expenditure of $2,246,500.
Make that motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mayor Bachi.
Second.
Second by Ms. Chambers. Is there a question? There's no question without objection. It's approved.
Resolution 264-22.
Thank you very much. Let's go. Authorization to enter into agreement. This is a request for authorization entered to a project agreement. Board of Park Commissioners, Cleveland Metropolitan Park District, provide local match funding toward the Cleveland Metropolitan Park's Foster's Run String Restoration Project in an amount not to exceed $40,000 combined with $500,000 from the Board of Park Commissioners of the Cleveland Metropolitan Park District to be paid from H2 Ohio. Project grant funds toward the total project cost of $540,000.
Move to adopt.
Motion by Mr. Sulu.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dumas. Is there a question? There's no question without objection. It's approved.
Resolution 265-22.
Thank you. Let's go to authorization to enter into contract. This is authorization to enter into a three-year contract with Centus Corporation for Uniform Services at all district facilities through Omni Partners Cooperative Purchasing Program in an amount not to exceed $563,358.90.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Chambers.
Second.
Second by Mayor Alai. Question? There's no question without objection. It's approved.
Resolution 266-22.
Thank you. Let's go. Authorization to amend agreement. This is authorization to amend Professional Services Agreement Number 17006784 with StanTech Consulting Services, Inc., for the Stormwater General Engineering Services II project to include additional work scope for the construction, administration, resident engineering, and closeout services necessary for the Upper Ridgewood Basin Improvement Project and to increase the agreement amount by $123,638, thereby bringing the total agreement amount not to exceed $1,873,638.
Move to adopt 267-22.
Motion by Ms. Dumas. Second by Mayor Bachi. Is there a question? There's no question without objection. It's approved.
Resolution 267-22.
Okay. Let's try Authorization to amend policy. This is authorization to amend the district's debt management policy originally adopted in Resolution Number 6107 and amended in Resolution 29510 to include various changes, including the incorporation of a revised interest rate swap policy, all as presented.
Move to adopt.
Motion by Mr. Sulu.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dumas. Question? Of course, there's a question. This is kind of a major rewrite. It's a significant rewrite of these policies, et cetera, so I would think some explanation overview might be appropriate.
Yes. Good afternoon, President Brown, members of the board. As you pointed out, it's looking at the red line of this policy. It is a significant rewrite to the text, but many of the core concepts and principles are the same. The original debt management policy was created in 2007, last edited in 2010. And that was a very different time for us from a financial perspective. We were entering the consent decree, anticipating essentially every other year bond issuances going forward at that point. A lot has changed since then, so this rewrite incorporates some of the current factors in play now, the changes in the WPCLF loan program that we've taken advantage of, and really reflects where we are now and going forward. We worked with our financial advisors from Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors to revise these policies and combine the existing interest rate swap policy into one comprehensive debt management policy. So I'll briefly talk about what stayed the same. So from the previous policy, obviously, the board has approval, authority over all of our debt transactions. We continue to focus on the best, lowest-cost, long-term options as we look to finance our capital program, have the best long-term impact on rates. The wastewater priority of funding does remain the same, obviously, grant funding, low-interest loan funding, and cash when available are the priorities. Bonds and other financing alternatives are less favorable, more costly. We're not changing the board coverage policies, so these are the debt coverage policies that we under no circumstances should go under. These are higher than our trust agreement policies, but lower than the CFO policies that we use for long-term financial planning. So these are the floors by which we will never go under. The savings thresholds for refunding transactions stays the same, 4%. And while there was a significant rewrite and update to the interest rate swap portion of the policy, we continue to move with extreme caution and have no interest at this point in pursuing any derivative transactions. So what's changed? Some general updates, refreshers according to GFOA best practices. We codified our sort of standing policy to not issue debt for the stormwater program at this point. The capital load on the sewer side with the consent decree is significant. We have $2 billion outstanding. At this point, we don't want to issue new debt for stormwater, given the ongoing capital needs on the sewer side. We extended the maximum borrowing length to 40 years in our policy. It had previously been 30. As you know, we did a 40-year structured loan with the Shoreline Tunnel earlier this year. We also had done some 35-year bonds in the past, so we just wanted to be able to have the policy reflect the furthest we could go by Ohio Revised Code. And as I mentioned, we combined the swap policy into the debt management policy document. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any other questions.
Any questions?
So Chair, it really read as though you were being tremendously specific about each step that happens during the process, as opposed to changing the policy and upgrading it for GFOA and Ohio Revised Code. There weren't significant changes, other than you wanted clarity on each step and who is responsible for what, so it didn't seem...
Yes, that was our goal, Ms. Dumas.
There are no other questions, and without objection, it's approved. Drum roll. All right. All right. Let's go. Authorization for bond defeasance, the partner. Okay. Providing for the defeasance of a portion of Series 2014 bonds maturing November 15, 2049, and a portion of the Series 2020 bonds maturing November 15, 2049, an amount not to exceed $90 million previously issued for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, improving water resource projects, and for refunding obligations previously issued for that purpose, advising the execution of an escrow agreement for the purpose of affecting the defeasance of the defeased bonds, and authorizing such other actions as are necessary and appropriate to accomplish the transactions hereby authorized.
Move to adopt 69-22.
Motion by Ms. Dumas. Second by Mayor Bachi. Question? Just if you could, I read it. I'm trying to understand, because you just told us what the threshold was for debt service earnings, and this is projected to be in excess of 4%, which is that threshold. So if you could just explain that a little bit, and then if you can quantify what that means to us in dollars and over what period of time.
Yes, absolutely, President Brown. First, I'll just take one step back and walk through our financial plan that we've been implementing over the last year and sort of where this transaction fits in relation to some of the other large transactions that we've done recently. Going back to early last year, as we were starting to wrap up the rate study, we began working with Baker Tilly, our financial advisor, to look at funding mixes, capital financing opportunities, as well as ways to best utilize the cash that we have available coming out of the rate study. So we reviewed all those obligations, looked forward, and we came up with basically a three-pronged plan of finance. It started with the 2021 bond refunding, where we specifically left behind some large maturities of the 2014 bonds to potentially defees in the future as the most ripe in terms of financial savings for that type of activity. We then went forward and took our last two large loans for the foreseeable future, WPCLF loans for the Shoreline Storage Tunnel and Westerly Chemically Enhanced High-Rate Treatment. Both of those loans are under 2% in terms of their interest rates over the long term. And then in December of last year, we made our first move into the defeasance activity with one maturity of the 2014 bonds. This is the next step in this process, to take out those remaining 2014 bonds, as well as a few additional 2020 bonds, based on where we stand today. So this transaction specifically, we're looking at, as I mentioned, two maturities of the 2014 bonds, those have a 4% interest rate on them, and two maturities of the 2020 bonds with a 3.3% interest rate. As you can see, these are very long maturities. We're estimated to need about $87 million in cash to defees those, but that is going to generate about $79.5 million in savings, or 94% of the defease par. On a year-by-year basis, we're looking at debt service savings of about $3.1 million. Obviously, that debt service reduction has that ongoing impact on debt service coverage, taking pressure off of the total debt service, which is really the driver in the rates. So this transaction, combined with all those others, gives us the best opportunity to have the most impact on rates going forward. This is just a brief look at, in terms of our outstanding debt, what that looks like. As you can see, there are small slices at the top, but the blue and the green slices represent the debt service associated with the bonds that we are going to defees. The larger blocks at the end are those actual, when those principal payments would have been due. And moving forward, John, this is that chart without those debts, so we still have that opportunity to utilize debt capacity in those future years on some of these large projects coming up, such as the Sutherley Tunnel within a few years, without having such a significant impact on the near-term rates.
All right. Very good. That's a great bottom line that you got, too, so it looks like a significant opportunity for us and our payers, so thank you for due diligence in that regard. Any other question or concern? If there's no other question or concern without objection, it's approved.
Resolution 269-22.
Thank you very much. Let's go. Property-related transaction. This is authorization to acquire one permanent stormwater easement at the property known as Parner Parcel Number 45720006, located on East Linden Lane, the city of Parma, owned by West Creek Conservancy, necessary for the ongoing maintenance of floodplain along Baltimore Creek. Total consideration of $1.
Move for adoption of Resolution 270-22.
Motion by Mayor Alai.
Second.
Second by Ms. Chambers. Is there a question?
A quick comment.
Yes, sir.
Now, we just talked about saving a lot of money. This is a 50% reduction over the August 4 meeting in property-related transactions.
Okay. Can't get anything by you, Karen. All right, great. No other question or comment without objection. It's approved. Thank you.
Resolution 270-22.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's me.
All right. Let's go. Hearing officer findings and recommendations. I'll start with adopting the findings and recommendations of the hearing officer regarding sewer count of Robert Buckwald. Sewer district hearing number 21-002, that no further adjustments be made. Request adopting the findings and recommendations of the hearing officer regarding sewer count of BP Corporate Properties LLC. Sewer district hearing number 21-013, that no further adjustments be made. And then finally, request for adopting the findings and recommendations of the hearing officer regarding sewer count of Lori Obney. Sewer district hearing number 20-016, that no further adjustments be made.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Chambers.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dumas. Is there a question? Being noted without objection, they are approved.
Resolutions 271 through 273-22.
Thank you very much. Let's go to finally, authorization to assist member communities. This is authorization to assist member communities in nominating projects to Ohio EPA for Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, funding as presented, and authorization to enter into project agreements with those member communities selected by OEP A to receive IIJ aid, funding to allow one or more district engineering consulting firms to perform design services for such projects with no cost to the district.
Move to adopt.
Motion by Mr. Sulu.
Second.
Second by Mayor Bachi. Question? Well, I do have a question. I was reading the description here, and it made reference to the statement, basically, to provide assistance and support. So just trying to understand, what does that mean? I see that we're managing design, but what else does that incorporate, and how does that apply to what we've already done to this point?
Devanna Marshall will kick off with that, President Brown.
President Brown, members of the board, first and foremost, we are assisting the communities in developing and submitting the applications, so we're utilizing a lot of the information that we have gathered through the local sewer system evaluation studies to put those applications together. So that's the first step. If we're successful in receiving any of that money, to your point, President Brown, the next step would be for us to then manage the procurement in the design contracts that would be required to deliver those projects.
What else? So, and then I also read, with interest, it says that this would allow us also to use one or more of the district engineering consulting firms for the purposes of design services here, and kind of understanding our relationship with some of our member communities, particularly the ones that are eligible in this regard. A number of them either have their own staff, or some of them have their own consultant that acts as their city engineer. And so what happens in those instances? Are they just out of luck with respect to that, or is there a way for their consultant to qualify, get approval? How are we going to approach that?
So President Brown, that's actually a very good question, so I'll answer it in many ways, because it all depends on how much money we get, right? And how much funding we get for how many projects, because first and foremost, we want to be very efficient in how we deliver these projects. So ideally, we'll be able to package them all into one design, and then also deliver them in one construction project in the future, in the hopes that if we're successful in getting money for the design portion, we can go back in future years and hopefully get funding for the construction portion. But with that said, it also depends on the amount of funding we get and the number of projects, because we have a lot of different options in front of us on how we would deliver those projects. So if it's not a lot of money, if we only get a small portion of the $8 million, there's probably a good chance that we would utilize existing contracts, like our general engineering services. But that's not, I mean, we can also consider going out for a request for proposal, where we would probably look to encourage those local consulting firms who do more city work to put in proposals on the design aspects.
Well, that's interesting, and I think that's a good response, a fair response, because I got to believe this is, as we all understand, just the beginning of this program process, and it can become, both from the design and construction side of it, it can have a lot of cash infused into it, so it might be very good for the local economy of consultants and the engineers in the region and the area. So I just wanted to make sure that we were cognizant of that opportunity as well. All right. All right. There's no other question? Without objection, it's approved.
Resolution 274-22.
Thank you. That does complete our action items. Let's go to information item. We have program management status report and update for July 2022.
Good afternoon, President Brown, members of the board.
Good afternoon.
So this is the monthly update on the capital improvement program for July 2022. So I will point out, this is the first time in a long time that, as part of this presentation, we're going to have a monthly feature. I personally am very happy about that, because, also of note, because we're having a monthly feature, I will not be providing construction updates, but in your board packet, we do include our monthly brochure, where we highlight some of the ongoing active construction efforts. The monthly feature will be on the Westerly Chemically Enhanced High-Rate Treatment Construction, and that will be, that update will be provided by Robyn Rup. She's the district project manager on that project.
Okay.
So looking first at cash flow, we ended the month of July at 78% of plan. This is also where we ended the month of June. In regards to actual dollars paid out, we paid out $15 million in the month of July, and year-to-date, we're tracking about $108.4 million. Moving on to our key performance indicators, on the design side, we completed the design of the Eastley Tunnel Watering Pump Station Groundwater Drainage Cleaning and Repairs project. The estimated construction is $800,000 on that project, and that was completed within 60 days of planned meeting the KPI. On the construction side of things, we achieved substantial completion on the Sutherley Second Stage Settling Improvements. That construction contract is a $38.4 million contract, and we did achieve that within 90 days of planned meeting the KPI. Also in construction, we closed a construction contract for the district-wide HVAC Equipment and Systems Upgrade. The final dollar amount of that contract was $4.5 million. That was a construction-only contract, and that was within 95% of the original contract amount, meeting the KPI there. However, we did not meet our KPI in the... However, we did not meet our K P I in the Business Opportunity Program goal in this project. The district goals were set at 15% M B E W B E and 5% S B E, where the projected actual is 2.1% M B E W B E and 94.5% for S B E. So the reasoning there is unfortunately, the M B E W B E firm that was slated to perform work on this job could not meet its commitments of the subcontract due to COVID-related issues. But on the bright side, that work did go to an S B E firm bumping up that percentage to the 94.55%. Looking at the work orders by change categories of a percent of construction on that job, they came in at just over 4% at 4.08%, which equates to about $182,000. And as you can see from the graphic there, the majority of that fell to the category of owner requested changes. And then also, and finally, we completed the construction of, or closed the construction, I'm sorry, for the Sutherley Miscellaneous Disinfection and Solids Handling Improvements. This was a design-build contract where the final dollar amount came in at 4.25 million, and this was within 95% of that original contract amount, meeting the K P I. And we did meet the K P I in this project for the Business Opportunity Program goals. Again, the district goals were set at 15% M B E W B E and 5% S B E, where the projected actual are 29.89% M B E W B E and 5.48% S B E. And then again, looking at the total work orders by change categories on this project, those equated to 3.35%, which is approximately $141,000. And again, the majority of that fell to the category of owner requested changes. And with that, I'll take any questions you have on my portion of the presentation.
Questions? None? All right.
Again, Robin Rup is going to give you an update on the Westerly Chemically Enhanced High Rate Treatment Project.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the board.
Good afternoon.
I'm here to give you an update on our Westerly Chemically Enhanced High Rate Treatment Project. So some of the objectives that we were looking towards setting when we designed this project were to maintain treatment with both chemically enhanced primary treatment, also with high-rate treatment for the disinfection, and that's for up to 411 million gallons. Currently, the facility that we have is sized for 300, so this is going to be an increase in capacity. We're also trying to avoid any negative impacts to the infamous C S O 69 activation. This is the Edgewater Beach location where we currently have been working on improvements to our collection system to provide a level of service for 10-year storm events. I'm going to give you some of the main impacts that we've looked at on this project to Whiskey Island Drive and some closures that we'll have there, a new entrance that we're going to be building at the plant, some temporary reduction in our wet weather treatment at the plant, relocating our employee parking, as well as, I mentioned, some impacts to C S O 069. This project did get underway in April of this year and will be going on through September of 2026. So some history for the Sistoff facility is what we currently refer to this location as. We dated back the original tanks at the facility into the 1930s, although the plant was built in the early 1910s decades. We found about 1930s is when they built the original Imhoff tanks. They can see a picture of what those tanks look like there in the middle. In that same space, that same footprint, in the late 1970s, early 80s, we converted those tanks to what we know as the Sistoff tanks today. And you can see a picture of that shown there on the right. So part of the improvements, we're going to be touching not only existing facilities of Sistoff, which you see in those buildings six, seven, and one, but we're also going to be touching various locations as well throughout the plant, and then building some new facilities, which you see there in the blue, taking us right up to the property line of our already very tight postage stamp property we have out at Westerly. This image is given to show you guys what the 3D version of the new facility will look like. So everything that's there in that dashed yellow line, that's going to be our new facility. We're adding some additional settling tanks here in the middle, some new disinfection tanks here, and then also providing a control building where we'll have some additional electrical equipment, chemical feed systems, so forth. And I'll get to our effluent flow conduit and flow control chamber as well in our next slide, but that's also being provided as some of the new enhancements on this facility. With the main goals of trying to meet our consent decree as well as protect the plant and the lake during wet weather events, we gave some serious consideration to how could we capture the flow, the 411 million gallons that are required by our consent decree to provide treatment, but also maintain additional flow paths for the flow to travel and safeguard, like I said, the plant during wet weather events. So we had three different options of where flows will be controlled. They'll be using the existing Sistoff tanks, the new settling tanks and disinfection tanks. That will be the capacity for our 411 million gallons. Once we get above that flow, we have a bypass pipe, we're calling the effluent flow conduit, that we're being installed around the new facility as well as a control chamber. That will allow us to help control that 411 million gallons as well as to send another 480 million gallons around the facility. And then in extreme events, when we get above about 900 million gallons, we will still have use of that center channel, which is what we currently use when we can't handle the flows in the existing tanks. We will have the capacity for about 600 more million gallons, allowing us about 1.5 billion gallons worth of capacity that we'll be able to handle with this facility. During the first phase of construction, which, an idea of timeframe that's about April of this year till about June of next year, we're trying to really set the stage and get the plant ready for the major improvements in excavation that are about to occur. So for this, some highlights of things that we're doing, we're going to actually relocate our existing entrance. So currently, our entrance comes through in this location here. We're going to be moving security to the bottom of the existing admin building, so on that first floor there. So this will now then become our new plant entrance. This will save us from some of the headaches that we could have in the areas that we need in this area for the excavation and the metal trucks we'll have coming in and out. Our contractors had to park now off-site because we, as I said, obviously don't have a lot of space for them. So our trailers are all going to be located in this area just to the west of the property, and we're providing a turnstile for them to access so they don't have to walk down Whiskey Island Drive to get into the plant. Our employee parking is moving up to by our maintenance building as they currently park down in this area where the tanks are going to be. And we also have now a temporary easement with the Port of Cleveland where we'll be moving some of their existing trailers away from the fence line and using some of that property to store equipment for laydown as well as for the construction needed to actually install the tanks and then this bypass, the effluent flow conduit. As I mentioned, the changes that are going to occur to the entrance, so this is currently the entrance into the plant through here. We are going to provide an entrance there when the project is set and done. It will not be our primary means of entrance. That will be still where we currently are relocating to the admin building, but we will have that ability with a swipe card system and intercom system. So should truck deliveries be easier to get in and out of that location, or employees can swipe in and so forth? And security will have cameras that they can see exactly who they're speaking to on the intercom as well. But we are going to, like I said, put in new gate system and swipe cards and so forth, all in this location here by admin for our main plant entrance. So to give you some orientation, this is Whiskey Island Drive. It was, we're heading out to Wendy Park, and in this is where the existing Northwest Interceptor is located. This is what brings the flow into the existing Sistoff facility. We're going to be making a connection into that existing pipeline to put in our new effluent flow conduit. And as you can see, that takes up some of the room within Whiskey Island Drive. So in order to make this installation, we have during the month of November to have one lane of closure, we provided the contractor some restrictions where they could mobilize, they could get set up to what will be a full closure in the months of December and January, where they will take full advantage of having that road to install the portion of the conduit that's located in the road. Then coming back in February and in March, they'll reopen to one lane where they'll complete the excavation of this area and restore the work so that by the time boating and recreation season starts into the end of March and into April, they'll have full access again for all the boating and recreation that occurs out at Wendy Park. But obviously, that means we still have to provide a way for the traffic to get out to Wendy Park on a limited basis, as well as to the marinas and emergency vehicles, the port authorities, so forth. We've worked with the contractor as well as our security staff that will be providing access badges to a restricted list of individuals who will gain access through our plant along this marked route. It'll be identified on the ground as well as we'll have a flagger from the contractor during the days to help the staff meander their way through our facility. By no means is this intended for boaters to bring their boats out through the plant by, you know, we're really trying to restrict this just to the necessity of folks in the area. We've also worked with the city of Cleveland in regards to their emergency vehicles, and once the new entrance is set, we're going to have them out actually to test with the fire and EMS equipment to make sure they're comfortable to getting in and out of this facility during these restricted months. During the second phase of construction, so I want to compare this similar to what we did over at Easterly where we put in our new tanks for the S E, the Easterly Secondary System Improvements. So those are large tanks, big excavation pit, where we're doing something very similar here. At Westerly, we need to make those tanks butt up directly against the existing line of our existing Sistoff facility. So for to do that, that means we need to shut down this facility at some point and no longer send flow through our center channel or through our tanks. In addition, we have modifications that have to be made in the existing tanks and the existing de-watering building. So all through that time, we have worked with the contractor to gain a reduced, yet full shutdown of this facility. So what does that mean? We have stormwater that's still coming to the facility as well as from our C S Os that has to go somewhere. And what we did was try to give serious consideration to not impacting C S O 69 any further than we could. Well, for the 10-year event, unfortunately, which is what we've been shooting towards, we were not able to provide, because we don't have our facility any longer during those months, that same level of protection, but we did ensure that during what we call our typical year, that we generally use for a lot of our design requirements, during our typical year, we will be able to provide at least some protection so we won't be overflowing at least at O 69 during those typical year storm events. This construction will take us through August of 2025. Also during that time period, I wanted to mention that there is a water line that is located under the new Metro Parks Trail that we are working with both the Metro Parks and Cleveland Water to relocate. So we will have some closures along Whiskey Island Drive again. I will mention, though, we've worked again with the contractor and the local entities to make sure this is done at night and during the winter months so that we're not impacting, or I should say, as little as possible impacting the businesses in that area. And then our third phase is the commissioning phase. So this is going to take us out into 2025 and 2026. We'll make some chemical improvements to provide for the disinfection as well as other feeds of chemical in the system, and then we'll work on our commissioning and our startup, and that will be taking us out to that 2026 timeframe. We have, as I mentioned several times during the presentation, a lot of coordination with our outside entities, making sure not only can they get through the plant during the construction period, but also making sure that we're abiding by some of the concerns with noise, any restrictions on traffic, so coming in and out with truck traffic. This is being a blind curve here by the plant. And we also want to make sure that we got buy-in from the councilwoman in that area and any concerns that she may have on notifying the public and making sure that they're aware. We put up several signs at the location too, to let everybody know what the project is and what we're hoping to accomplish. So to reiterate, as I had previously indicated, these are some of the main impacts. As we discussed, the Whiskey Island Drive closure, the new entrance we'll be providing to the plants, the temporary reduction in the wet weather treatment, a relocation of our employee parking lot, the impacts to C S O 069. And here, as I mentioned, two are the timeframes in which we'll have both partial completion of using Sistoff and the new C H R T facility, as well as then the full shutdown, which will occur starting next fall of 2024 into 2025. With that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Not really a question, but just looking at kind of the geography of that site, you mentioned Easterly, it's a whole different animal than Easterly. This is, you know, trying to squeeze 10 pounds or something in a frying pan there. This is really trying to optimize a site that really is surrounded by a number of important neighbors. I mean, you've got a water system plant right almost right next door, you've got yacht clubs, you've got everything, and then, and all the flow that comes from the Northwest Interceptor, which is one of my favorites. And just looking at the opportunity to have the same impact you had on the east side, which I guess is the optimum goal here, so that we don't have the amount of not necessarily basement flooding, but discharge to the environment that we've had historically. So I think between that and your schedule and your ability to make sure that you stay on schedule so that you don't impact these other entities, some of them which have seasonal programs, is a huge challenge. So I mean, good plan, but, oh, boy.
We'll do our best, yes, we'll do our best, obviously, to try to implement all of this timeframe allotted.
And I just wanted to comment on that, President Brown. First of all, I wish I had that speech when we were negotiating with the consent decree, but it sounded very similar to the same story we were telling them. This is not, you know, we're environmentalists too, and we do our job and we do it well, and this is not a small undertaking. We often downplay our projects, but we do some pretty sophisticated construction and design, and this is one of them. And we have our best team on it, and we have a good contractor, and we're hopeful it'll go well, but there's a lot we're dealing with here, not only the small footprint, but obviously, we're close to the water, so we're going to have water issues with excavation, and yeah, it's not going to be an easy job, but we're hopeful it'll go on with success and not any major complications.
Okay. I'm going to take your word for it. All right. Stay tuned. Right, great, thank you. Great presentation, I appreciate it. All right, that takes care of our information item. Let's move to open session. Anything for the good of the order? No? Madam CEO, has anyone signed up to speak during the public session portion of our agenda on any subject matter?
They have not, Mr. President.
Okay. And I do not believe we have a matter for executive session, did I?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, then we have completed our agenda, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
And I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mayor Bachi, second by Ms. Dumas. Without objection, we adjourn. Thank you.